Director Furquhart?
Here.
Director Goodsell?
Here.
Director Menard? Director Proctor? Director Berger? Director Valdez?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Would everybody please stand for the motion of allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cho, do we have any approvals for remote appearance by board members?
I have no approved requests and no, I don't see any board members on the Zoom.
I'm with you. Now I will consider approval of the agenda. In the case of emergency, items may be added to the agenda by a majority vote of the Board of Directors. An emergency is defined as a work stoppage, a crippling disaster, or other activity that severely interferes public health, safety, or both. Items on the agenda may be taken out of sequential order as of priorities determined by the Board of Directors. The Board may take action on any item appearing on the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion.
I have a motion by Garcia and a second by Goodsell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item six, public comments. At this time, the Board will ignore comments on any agenda item. If any person wishes to be heard, he or she shall scan, address the President, identify self, and state the subject for the comment. Time limit for each speaker is 30 minutes total. Not 3 minutes per item, but rather 3 minutes per speaker for all items on the agenda, with respect to the public hearing below. The total of 15 minutes shall be allocated for each item for all members of the public. The Board may find it necessary to limit the total time allowable for all public comments on items not appearing on the agenda at any one meeting to one hour. Do you have anybody here that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll now move on to the consent calendar. Any member of the Board, staff, or public may request that items for the consent calendar be removed for discussion. Items so removed shall be acted upon separately immediately following approval of the items remaining on the consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So.
I have a motion by Valdez and a second by Goodsell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item eight, board member comments. Reports on meeting and events attended by directors and authorization for director attendance at upcoming meetings and events/ director comments. Do any of my board directors have anything they'd like to update? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing at 6:20 PM for item nine. Presentation on draft maps by National Demographics Corporation.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is Mike Hahn.
Good one.
There's a button right behind you. How about that? Well, you can hear future voice. Good to see everyone again. I'm here on the third public hearing, in a series of five. We'll do the fourth and fifth next time, I mean, on June 13th. So we're going to wait for the presentation to come up so our, thank you, by the way, so our folks on the Zoom can see the PowerPoint or from the agenda. So this is part of the agenda pack. You go to the next slide, please. This is part of the agenda pack. And I was talking about this is the third of five public hearings, so we'll go to the next one. So, again, in review, for those who may not have been here, the first two public hearings, this process requires that we follow federal laws, that we're trying to create seven districts or zones of equal population. Difficult to do, many occasions, because we use census blocks to create these zones, and every census block is of different size, shape, and has a different number of books that live inside of them. It's all based on, we're using based on the 2020 census. We have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act to make sure there's no racial hearing boundaries. And then when we shift to California, the criteria that we must use in prioritized order, our zones must be geographically contiguous. We want to minimize divisions of neighborhoods and communities of interest. I think you'll see we did a pretty good job there. Same with minimizing divisions of cities and census designated places. Same applies there. I think we did a pretty good job there. Hopefully you'll concur. And we'll want easily identifiable boundaries, and we want our districts or zones to be compact. We also have the California prohibition in 1898 language there as well. We go to the next slide. So we have three draft plans for you, green, purple, and tan. And we'll try to go in order, alphabetical order on these, and give a brief description of each draft plan, so you'll have a good understanding as you make a decision after tonight's public hearing. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So the green map is based on a director's request to look at keeping the West County out of basically Imperial and other big cities. So that's what you get in zone one. All three maps will show, you're going to see splits, and that's why you have four cities on every map of the PowerPoint. It'll show you the cities of Raleigh, Imperial, Alcentro, and Callexico. And all except Imperial, I'm fairly certain, were split because they were too large to get to that, you know, 25,000 per district area. So that's the only reason they're split. Every census block is census block. Every census designated place is kept together, however. So you're going to see that in every draft coming before you. And this one, for human reservation, is in zone seven. So we go to the next one, please. This is purple. Now, I'm trying to replicate the pre-Imperial Valley Healthcare District, the three districts. And so in zone one is entirely an old Pioneer's Memorial, including much of Callexico. If you were to look at it, for example, before I keep going, if you look at the Heffernan and Pioneer's Healthcare Districts, you're not going to see exactly the same boundaries as you would on these representations. The census blocks, whether they were created, whenever they were created, did not reflect the census blocks of all the 2020 census. So there's not straight lines, like you will see what the healthcare districts looked like in the past. So zone seven is entirely in the old Heffernan Memorial District, including northwest Raleigh. Zone two has the rest of Pioneer's Memorial, including the southern and northeastern Raleigh, and the southwest region of the county. And then zone three has all of Imperial, as I mentioned. Zone four entirely in El Centro on the west side of the city. Zone five is eastern El Centro plus Heber. And zone six has the rest of Heffernan Memorial, including much of Callexico along the eastern edge of the county. Here, I'm talking about this, and I'm going really quickly. They're also on the website for folks at home, or folks here. There's what's called an interactive review tool, so you can actually drill in to see the differences between the three drafts. Folks could, you know, drill down to their census block via their address, et cetera. So that's available. We go to the next map, please. This is the tan map. Tried to make it easy, tan trustees. So I tried to create a map that replicated the Imperial Valley Community College District trustee areas, because the northwest corner is not part of the Imperial Valley Community College District. It's not going to be precise, because here's where the population balance requirement makes that little bit change. But it attempts to replicate, and it does a pretty good job of most of that with the tan map. We go to the next slide, please. So if you share your thoughts, here's how you get ahold of folks at the Imperial Valley Healthcare District, and be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point before you open up for public hearing.
Yes, go for it.
Being the representative for Hopeville, and the fact that our name was left off of your list because you have those four larger cities, and looking at all the maps, it seems like we got kind of dissected pretty well. I mean, we're like bits of us, I mean, I don't really like any of the maps for us because we're missing like our country club block, and then if we head south, one seven month, the Orchard Road and SR7, we're missing our Nomura Road people that are out, like in the county of Hopeville. So, here, I can add. I don't know.
Yeah, Hopeville, you know, we used the, as far as the boundaries of Hopeville itself, it was kept together. So are you talking about those that were beyond the boundaries of Hopeville itself? The actual boundaries?
Well, if you're talking about the city of Hopeville versus, say, the Hopeville Unified School District, then we would consider Hopeville as far as all of us, where even though it's nothing for greater city of Hopeville, we're still Hopeville, and we're still voters that vote as Hopeville, even though we're in the county, if that makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense, yeah. But under the law, we have to use the jurisdiction of either the city or census designated place. But that, if there's a desire to create a draft that would include, say, Hopeville Unified, we can accomplish that. Again, it goes back to population balance, but that shouldn't be that difficult.
Does that just kind of keep that together better?
I understand your comments, but I think if we start doing that, we're going to send us down a rabbit hole, because if we look like all the cities are pretty much kind of diced up within it, and if we make another map favoring to one city, I think then we're going to have to do that for all the cities, and I don't think that's probably what we're looking at.
Well, we're not sure I'm asking to favor Hopeville in the sense that if the population split in such, you know, we run the risk of, say, where our parts are blumped into Callexico getting covered by Callexico, or where we're blumped in up here with some of Raleigh getting covered, you know, it's like I just want to make sure population-wise and voter-wise, the people of Hopeville aren't getting overshadowed because we're getting dumped into these other places where we may or may not be able to get a representative on this board, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. I think we have the interactive review map here.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, yeah.
Is this where we give input on individual maps themselves?
Yes.
Because I think catalog three, purple, would probably be our best.
If I could give mine?
Sorry, go ahead.
So I had some, I ran some pros and cons on the different maps, and then obviously the green, that was me that you were referring to. So, but let me start with, on the purple, potential results, right? I'm just looking at this strategically and making sure each area has a representative for that particular area that represents that community. And there's a potential, in my view, the way the map is designed on the purple, that we could potentially end up with two Callexico individuals representing, well, two seats represented by Callexico. And then also on this map, the way it's drawn with the numbers there, there's potential of the north, two north-end seats, two seats here on the board being represented by two individuals from the north end. And Hopeville will be seated by Imperial or Callexico potentially, just given by the numbers. And then, so those are my, on purple, I just, that was my least favorite. The next one up would be tan. Again, two potential north ends, two of these seats potentially represented by north-end individuals, two from Callexico that ways divided there. The way I was looking at it, but in all fairness, I was not thinking about the country club, and I completely understand what Director Goodsell was mentioning there. But Hopeville, just on the city itself, I thought probably its best option, but north-end has the advantage on that one still. And then District Three, Imperial, would have the advantage, of course. So that, you know, District Three would be virtually governed by the Imperial individual most likely on that, just due to the population, what have you, and name recognition, most likely, if there's somebody known in the community that's running. And then, so again, going to three, to green, of course, I thought that was the best option for Division One, but I'm not running, or I'm not allowed to run anyway. So, but as far as like-for-like, trying to compare like-to-like, apples-to-apples-like communities, it encompasses very similar communities in the sense with Celiacatillo, Westmoreland, Nyland, Salt Sea, Bon Bay, you know. And also, this one incorporates Heber as well. And then, the way I looked at this was a fair fight for West End number seven. Number seven, nobody seemed to, I mean, it was not a, you know, Hopeville's not favored in that, but I thought they would have, they would be able to, they have a chance in that fight, right? And then I thought, in this particular one here, each, the four areas here, Raleigh, Alcentro, Callexico, have their, and Imperial kind of have their pockets of representation there. So in this sense here, the West End would have the representation, Raleigh, Alcentro, Callexico, and Imperial would have the representation, but going back to Hopeville on the West End there, they're going, they would have to duke it out, basically, on this one. But, you know, the way it sweeps down to Callexico, it's taken a piece of Callexico, but not the lion's share, to where I think Hopeville would have a fighting chance on that.
Yeah. I also liked the green map as well, because it had all the, like, the rural communities, so I kind of looked at it as people that are going to have the similar healthcare needs, you know. So obviously, you know, one and seven, those are the favorable areas, and so, yeah, similar needs. And then saying like two, you know, two, three, four, five, all pretty much, you know, are like cities, and so those people are going to have a little bit of different needs as well. So I liked the green one.
I myself would favor the tan, and the purple map, being that El Centro and Callexico are the biggest cities in the county. So the biggest cities, they should be represented equally, I mean, with more representatives on the board.
Do we have any other questions?
I have a little bit of just guidance for the Board. So we still have to open the hearing up to the public, and then once we go into our next item, the goal of today, I think I can see two goals. So, one outcome, sorry, I'm pulling up my agenda, would be to see if we could get consensus today among the Board on one of these three maps. If we cannot, then see if we want to give direction to Mr. Tilton to create another, a different map. But if we do that, we would have to have a special meeting between now and the June meeting, to publish the map seven days in advance, and then, you know, at the special meeting between now and the June meeting, then we have to hope that the Board gets consensus on selecting a map. Because we have to adopt a map, the resolution that establishes the electoral districts before July of one. So with respect to timing, that's sort of where we're at. We're doing the two public hearings, which are the two, it is, the hearing to, the second hearing to discuss and revise the maps, and then the final map adoption via resolution. We can do those two hearings in one day, and we're planning on doing both of those two hearings on June 13. But if you want to have another hearing to discuss a potential other option, right, like an orange option or whatever, then we'd have to have a meeting between now and June 13. So, you know, if other board members have comments, now's the time to share them, and then we open it up to the public for any public comments. And then, once we close the public hearing, those will be the sort of considerations that the Board should have in mind.
If we take them back and ask him to redraw the map, then we're going to have to do amendment to his contract, correct?
No, I, the NDC contract, or NDR contract, contemplates, I think, three to five maps. So, you know, an additional hearing that Mr. Tilton would have to be at would cost more money, because it's per hearing, his attendance. But other than that, it still falls within the scope of the contract. We wouldn't have to amend anything.
Okay. With that, do you have any more comments or questions from my directors? If not, I'm going to have the public hearing at 6:26, and do we have any members of the public? Please step in.
My name is John Grass, and this question's pretty much for Mr. Tilton. And looking at the data on the maps, it looks like two out of the three maps include 2010 census data rather than 2020. So I don't know if that's going to change any of that calculation, or the lines drawn, but I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. Also, while the discussion is going on, it occurred to me that some of the criteria that's being considered as healthcare service areas might be an area, I don't even know if that's possible, but healthcare service areas is a criteria that might be considered as how to draw lines or how to get representation in different districts. But again, I don't know what the rules are on that, but that's just another consideration. We have three distinct healthcare districts that are, people are served by those, not districts, but areas, service areas, and so it makes sense that people have representation from the districts where they pretty much frequently get their services. So those two things, I just wanted to present, so that district.
Do you have any other comments from the public?
Good evening, board members. It was challenging to understand your concerns for Hopeville. I think if you see some of the certain, some of the races that are happening right now for office, for more than several other Division Two, part of a little bit of Callexico, which I don't think it belongs, but that's just the way it was drawn. It's kind of weird, if you look at Callexico ID Division Four, it's not what it was before. Both people running for office are struggling where to get their votes. And I'd just like to, just examples are really too many for a candidate to really mess up. I just want it done in the best interest for all individuals of the valley, and not so much for favoritism, even though we kind of know where the population centers are. And if you're in Winney even, or on Acquahut, you're kind of, you're at the mercy of the bigger population areas, just the way it's drawn, and I know they're not, I know they're not happy. When I lived in Raleigh, I was one street growing up away from St. Dennis. I could have made Lily, okay? It was kind of sad, and ten years later, not even part of the city. And it was terrible for those people, and that was 1,500 people affected there. So I just want you to understand that, whatever decision you make, I'll support it, because I know you already have a difficult task, and I don't want to add any more to your, to the bridge you got to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Do you have to hand up on the Zoom for public comment?
Let me see the language in our agenda. We don't have a, sure, we can accept public comment from members of the public. Please just state your name and where you're from, and we'll accept public comments on the maps.
Are you accepting comments through Zoom at this time?
It's at the discretion of the Board, but I will recommend accepting comments. You're still limited to the three minutes, and you're required to identify yourself.
So I won't be a ministry to Laura, because I'm my Goodsell, her husband. I served on the City Council in Hopeville. So some of the things that she said, I wanted to ask you to look at the chat, if you would. I've said a couple of things there about the map, if you extended it to the school district or areas, it's not going to significantly impact the census or even much of anything, except that Hopeville will be a bloody block that's intact, where they'll still be outweighed by Callexico's presence and be attached to them in some way or another. But at least those people who traditionally vote together would continue to, in this sense.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, my name is Christine Agassi. I'm a consultant with the Coalition for Sustainable Healthcare Facilities. Just a comment, I think that the first speaker may have already addressed this, but both the tan and purple maps, the tables that are provided with those, do reflect that the population data is from 2010. So I think that, you know, perhaps it's just a typo, but I think that should be clarified before one of the maps is selected, to make sure that they're all utilizing the same population data. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Mr. Tilton, do you know if that's a typo, or if that's something we have to circle back to?
We'll circle back to it and make the correction on the typos. Yeah. One way to verify, we look at, first of all, with apologies, it really just impacts the table. We look at the green map and its table, and down below, what the gentleman is, Mr., is it Grass?
Grass.
Yeah, Mr. Grass was referring to. Down at the bottom of the green table, it says total population data from the 2020 communal census. Well, and then, if you look at the other three data tables, all the totals are the same. So it is just a typo, and the same you would apply for the American Survey Special Tabulation Five-Year Data. The green, it says 2018 to 2022, and then the other two say 2013 to 2017. But the totals among the three match, so it's just a typo on those two. And we'll get that corrected, we'll send it to council, get that posted, but it does not impact the drawing of those other three drafts.
Thank you. I was saying the same thing, because all your numbers are out of two same exact numbers, so. I mean, statistically, it's fine. Then I'll close this public hearing at 6:34. Do you have any motions or recommendations from the council or the Board?
You may want to move to item 11A. Yeah.
So with that, we'll move it to item 11A, review three draft electoral maps discussed and select one map for final consideration and adoption at the next public hearing, scheduled to take place on June 13, 2024. Do you have a motion or?
Well, at this stage, I would make a motion for map green, if we're not going to do any revisions.
Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. That's not the motion I was on before. That's not the motion I was on before.
I'll amend my motion.
Yeah.
Um, and I'd like, if it's possible at this point, to do another revision to, because I completely understand the country club, the country club folks are Hopeville folks. And that border block, just like the councilman mentioned, if there's a way to just tweak that a little bit and maybe come back with an orange map or what have you, based, in my, in my motion, based off of the green map.
Oh, like Green B or something?
Green B, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Um, we can do that. No, keeping in mind that we're going to have to have another public hearing, um, and that's going to cost staff time. And then we're going to have to pay for him to come down again. And so we already, you know, have, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that, it could be done. Um, we're going to have some strict timelines. Uh, we have the posting requirements, et cetera. And that's just the reality. Uh, our desire is to be finished by June 13. Um, I also want to throw out this, I don't mean no disrespect whatsoever, but we will also be redistricting after the 2030 census. I just want to make sure you're aware of it. I'm not politicking for anything, just bringing that awareness to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, every time I think, and I always, you know, having meetings costs money. We pay our attorney per hour to come down. We're going to pay a consultant to come down. I mean, I would like to select a map today.
Well, this is the first chance we have to look at the maps to make any comment. This is the one thing that I think we need to do and get it done right instead of rushing it. I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I understand your concerns. I just don't, if we start going, oh, you cut Hopeville, which is a population of 5,000. When we start going, we cut Imperial because Imperial's cut as well. You know, all these other places are cut. We could spend forever on these maps.
I can ask, I can suggest something. So, um, and Mr. Tilton, please correct me if you think I'm wrong. But, um, if we directed you to do a Green B and then posted that, posted that map, you know, seven days plus from June 13, could we adopt it in hearing four and five?
Yeah, as long as we have it posted by June 6, um, whatever time that June 13 meeting is. So if it's a four o'clock start.
Right.
And we have it posted to the right side.
Just because, so it's unusual to direct council to bring back a resolution identifying a map you've never seen before. But if you wanted to take the chance that map Green B is the one you're going to like the most blind, then we can skip the special meeting between now and June, come back with the, um, Green B on June 13, and make sure it's published seven days plus before June 13. And then you would be in the situation where you would be pretty compelled to adopt it at that meeting. Or you could try to, if something happened dramatic, you could have a special meeting between June 6, I'm sorry, uh, June 13 and July 1. You'd have to have another meeting right away. It's really pushing it, but that is an option if you want to consider it. Normally, you would give direction, bring back another map, have another meeting, talk about it and say, yes, this is the map we have. This is the map we want. Then we discuss sequencing. And then we come back to the next meeting and say, this is the map, and adopt the resolution that's ready to go with all the numbers, with all everything. But we can try to.
My thoughts on that is, well, question also for so many is, uh, and so if we're just talking about the country club and not, not broadly, I know, you know, it's around an area so much, but if we're able to capture the country club knowing more or less what the population is there, we can kind of understand what the numbers are, how the numbers are going to fall in line anyway tonight. Uh, and knowing that that's not going to tip one way or the other. And if it doesn't have a significant effect, then I think we can make a decision on that.
Yeah, this will impact, uh, however many you add to that particular areas you're going to take from a neighboring district likely.
So it's not just a central, it's not just a pure added.
No, because we've got that 10% maximum variance we can have. So we're going to have to take that, you know, thousand or however many it is from someplace else, Colexico, likely. I'm just thinking where, where it is geographically.
I'd say it's probably less than 500 people.
Yeah.
And I have a question. Before we consider another green map, don't we have to approve, or has a motion to the table first?
He amended his motion. So if someone else wants to make a motion on a map, one of the maps that's ready for today, you can. But the motion on the table is currently amended to, uh, request the revision of the green map.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So you could pull, you could, yeah. We have to see if there's a second to the motion or not. Uh, the motion may die.
Yeah, I believe the chair said it.
No, that was just approved the green.
Oh, yeah, that was.
That was before he amended it.
All right.
I mean, I'll second that motion.
To amend the green map and bring it back here.
Um, with that, can we do a roll call, please? Director McGarrett?
No.
Director Van Biss?
No.
Director Burgwood?
Yes.
Director Goodsell?
Yeah.
Director Garcia?
Yes.
Motion thousand?
Motion carries through two.
Oh, no. Sorry, let me look at my, I think, don't you need four? Because you have a seven-person board. I think it's a majority of the board, have a majority of the folks present. Let me look. Yeah, I'm going to have to look at her. Sorry, I'm pulling up our bylaws. Though one day I don't bring my binder that has the bylaws in it.
Oh, yeah. The binder of everything?
Oh, just one second.
I told you it's the binder of everything. She's had it all.
Okay, make sure you have the same version.
But on your section of the document, since the number of votes required for board of directors' action?
Right, in order for the board of directors to take action, a majority of the directors entitled to vote on the matter, who have not abstained, must vote in favor of the motion, proposal or resolution. So a majority of the directors entitled to vote on the matter means the number of the directors present. You're right, you're positive.
Yes, clarification?
Yes.
Uh, so I'm bringing back Green B on June 13. Are we having a special meeting? Uh, and is that the only map that's coming back?
Yes, that's the only map that's coming back.
We have a date, we haven't talked about a date, or it was seven for June 13?
I think we're seven for June 13, and then we'll have it by the sixth to post.
Okay. Yeah, you've got to post on. So, but, um, we still have to give Mr. Tilton more direction because, so step one is approving a map. Let's say, let's work off of green, right? Because it's going to be Green B. So looking at green, the current version of green that's in front of you has numbers on it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. You don't need, pink doesn't have to be one, right? Pink could be four. Blue could be one, you know, et cetera. So we have to have a discussion about sequencing. So here's the four big decisions. One, what map do you like? We've chosen Green B. Two, which seats are going to be up for election first and how many? The draft resolution, which is attached to the agenda packet, suggests three seats up this fall and then four seats up in 2026. And that will accomplish the AB 1918 goal. So we have to decide which seats are up for election this fall and then which districts have which numbers and then which districts are up for election this fall.
I don't think they were up for election until 2026 and then 2028. I mean, you can read.
They're up whenever we would like them to be up. You could, you have to have an entirely elected, um, board by 2028.
So I think since it would be kind of not in the best interest of creating the district to put in three new board members right now. Like, because you don't think these people are pulling papers in September, then you have election while we're trying to literally negotiate a hospital and, you know, do everything we're doing. Um, so I would suggest that we have it for 2026 and then 2028.
I made a motion for that.
Okay, so do you?
With three seats up first and then four second?
So three seats up in 2026, four seats up in 2028.
And then here's my next question is, so do all of us on this board fall into one of those slots that are district boundaries? And so who of the seven, since I'm going to guess that we don't all fall into them? Like who represents?
So we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to?
I, and yeah, that's why I'm asking, like, we're not supposed to who? But then like who?
So here's how I propose to do it.
Okay.
There is Health and Safety Code, Part 8B2449. The 32499.6 says, oh, and I'll put up, put up on the screen so that the folks can see if you'd like. So here's the language of AB 2449. And it's got the initial board of directors and the appointments, right? So it's Pioneers, Heffronin, El Centro, et cetera, et cetera. My recommendation, and this is absolutely at your discretion. You can say, no, I will not be offended. I have no dog in this fight. But, um, I, seeing potential legal issues presented currently, for example, the closed session where we have the board member, where we have a board member who has to abstain before going into the closed session because of litigation issues. Um, I, because Pioneers and Heffronin are going to be dissolved this year, I do think that it makes sense for the three seats to be up first, to be A, B, and C, which is the director appointed from Pioneers, the director appointed from Heffronin, and the director appointed from City of El Centro. And that is because the hope of AB 918 is that those three seats, that those three entities become IVHD. If that is something that makes sense to this board, then I think you should designate the districts that are up for election in 2026 to be Raleigh, Colexico. Like, you know what I mean? You have to choose in the map saying, okay, we're going to do in 2026 Districts 1, 2, 3. In 2028, Districts 4, 5, 6, 7. Or you could do 2, 4, 6, and 1, 3, 5, 7, whatever, whatever you want to choose. But you have to choose three and three. And the three that go out should be the three that come in. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So whatever you guys decide to pick, I think it should be, instead of picking a person or, you know, you pick seats, right? It's either A through G. Hopeville, Imperial, Tri, County, El Centro, Heffronin, Pioneers. We have to designate which seats are staggering off of the initial board and, and then decide which districts, like, identify them on the maps and then decide that those are coming on. And that's what seems to make the most sense is whoever's coming off, try to identify the district. For example, if it was, you know, a person from Heffronin, then make sure that Colexico is one of the seats that's up at the next election.
Looking at the green map, the way I'm reading it, it looks like those three have their own pockets. Colexico, El Centro, and Raleigh. And, uh, so that's, that's the way I'm interpreting the map unless my lines are off a little bit. But, uh, so I think adopting the version of the green map would secure that, that option that you mentioned there.
So is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so hold on. The motion is, the first?
The motion is?
It's going to be a package motion. So the first one is for three seats to be up in 2026, four seats to be up in 2028. Of the three seats that are up in 2026 is your motion to have the three seats that are up represent A, B, and C from 32449.6A1, which is Pioneers, Heffronin, and City of El Centro appointees.
Yes, but do I need to identify the, the actual numbers here on the map?
So yes, that's the next part. The first part is who's going out. The next part is who's coming in. And so the first part is identifying the appointees that are up for, that are.
That's two separate motions.
You could do two separate motions. You could do it all at once, but you could do it two separate motions.
Or should we do it in three separate motions?
Yeah, you could do it in three separate motions. Let's do it in three. So the first one that I heard was three seats up in 2026, four seats up in 2028. Who made that motion?
I made that motion.
Okay, Director Garcia.
Second motion.
All in favor for the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, the next question is which seats are up in 2026? That will just naturally cycle to the four seats in 2028, so we don't have to talk about that. So which, which appointees from Health and Safety Code, and I'm going to throw it up on the screen, which appointees from Health and Safety Code 32499.6A1 are the three seats that will be up in 2026?
So I'll make the motion that the three seats to be up for election are seats A, B, and C as listed on Health and Safety Code number 32499.6. Also.
All in favor for the motion on the floor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the, the next question with respect to staggering is which districts on map Green B, which will eventually be B, have which numbers? So I'm going to throw up onto this chair's screen. Map green. So here's map green. If we want to renumber, we have to give Mr. Tilton that direction today.
Okay.
So which, so District 2 is, do you want to do 1, 2, 3?
Well, as it stands, I would, according to the numbers on the map, it looks like El Centro has the, I mean, number two has the Colexico pocket. Number three has the El Centro pocket, et cetera. And then number four has the Raleigh pocket, et cetera.
So do you want to just, for my, my, the way my brain works, should we just switch 1 and 4 on the map, the numbers?
Yeah.
So that 1, 2, and 3 are up in 26 and then 4, 5, 6, 7 are up in 28? And that way, we're not saying, what, 2, 3, and 4, and it's a little confusing?
Yeah.
In addition to that, I'd like to make the amendment, then? Or do I make the amendment or?
No, so, um, let's have your, if you want, your motion be to switch the numbering on the green map to swap 4 and 1 and then move to have districts 1, 2, and 3 once swapped up for election in 2026.
Make a motion to swap the numbers of the districts between 1 and 4.
And, um, and then have districts 1, 2, 3 as revised up for election in 2026?
Yes, and then have, commute, if we, and then also, then revise the numbering for 4, 5, and 6, 7.
Right. Does, does that, does that make sense to everyone on the board? Or does anyone want an explanation of the motion?
No.
I understand the motion, but I, I believe. I understand the motion, but I believe that it should be, that the motion should say that the revised would be 1, 2, and 3 on the next election, right?
Correct, 1, 2, and 3 as revised.
That would be the next motion, or?
You can do it all together.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take it to the second, next motion is done.
Okay, so the districts that are up in 2026 will be A, B, C, and 1, 2, 3. And then the actual districts on green are going to be Current 2, Current 3, and Current 4 will be switched with the numbering with 1. 1 and 4 will just walk. Mr. Tilton, does that make sense to you?
I agree.
Great. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Garcia, a second by Mattar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Great.
So now we're done with the maps.
So we're done with 11A, and we will bring back map green B on June 13th with a resolution that is substantially similar to the resolution attached to this agenda, except those yellow highlights will be filled in. And the only thing left to do, which is required by the Elections Code, is to direct me or post the minority group analysis as required under Elections Code Section 21130B. That is the second page of the maps. So we will, I recommend you make a motion to direct us to do that so that we can make sure and do that when we post map green B seven days prior to the next hearing.
I had a question about the memorandum. Is this, is this based on law or is this something that we can potentially modify?
The memo is something I drafted for background and information purposes. What part you want to modify?
The one thing I just had a question about was Section 2. But on the, oh, it's the resolution number.
Oh, resolution-
Is this where I'm going to talk about this?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, Section 2 where it says the person running for the district has to be a resident there for the past 30 days. Is there any potential to extend that to maybe a resident for the past year? I think the idea is if you're running for that district because you're connected to that district, if you just got there 30 days ago to potentially run for the seat, how connected are we to basically?
So that happens all the time. I mean, that scenario, it just happened in San Diego with one of the city attorney races. If someone bought an apartment in one of the cities to be able to run for city attorney in that section. And the attack is political. So the way to deal with that is by blasting that person in the media and saying, you just moved to your, but it would be inconsistent with the law because you have to also picture a person who in good faith just moved to town 90 days ago or whatever, and is really interested in civic service. And you can't put more stringent rules on the statutory provisions than the legislature has. So you're not the first person to ask that question, but the answer is no, you have to stick with the statutory code.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion?
Oh, right, so the motion would be on B, Minority Group Analysis.
So I'll make the motion that we have to direct our legal counsel here to conduct and post the minority group analysis as required under the Elections Code Section 21130 subsection B.
Second.
I have a motion by Mattar, and a second by that ends. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So now the motion carries. I feel like we are good.
Yeah, you're done with item B and C, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Tilton.
Thank you, Mr. Tilton.
Now move on to item 11D. Discussion and possible action regarding PMHD, El Centro, and Heffernan funding requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll take that one. So on, within, I don't have the exact date of, but I'm going to find it right now. Pursuant to the board's direction at the last board meeting, we circulated a letter to Heffernan, PMH, and the City of El Centro requesting funding. And we have gotten a response from Heffernan, which is they've granted our request, approved our request. I have not heard back. I got acknowledgements from the CEO of ECRMC, and I've gotten, or, I'm sorry, the CEO of Pioneers, and from the City of El Centro that they received our requests. The City of El Centro has said they're considering it, and it may come from ECRMC or it may come from El Centro. It will see, it's not something that was shot down. And Pioneers has acknowledged receipt of the funding request, but I have not heard anything from them about approving it. But that was sent. So in light of the fact that we have some discretionary funding coming in from Heffernan, we are at the point where this board, you may recall at the last board meeting, we had your AB 123 for expense reimbursement policy, or for example mileage to cover this long travel to the meeting, and a modest board stipend, which is provided by statute, which is $100 a meeting. It is not generous. And that is, those are funds that would come from the discretionary funding that was recently approved. Do you want me to bring that resolution back to the next board meeting for consideration?
In my opinion, I think we should wait for a response from El Centro and PMH before we approve that.
Resolution?
I think we have other things we need to chip away at, you know?
No problem. I'm just bringing it up because if I don't, who will?
Yeah.
It will seem tacky if one of you bring it up, so it is my job to do that. No problem. And I will continue to keep you posted. Is there anything you'd like me to do with respect to follow-up on the funding request? Besides just follow-up? I'll follow-up between now and the next board meeting, but, okay? Great. So that's item 11D.
If you can let them know that Heffernan did contribute.
Yeah. I definitely will.
Perfect. So no motion against reading on that, correct?
Correct.
All right, and then we'll go to item E, Discussion and Board Direction relating to AB 918, mergers, acquisitions, and negotiations.
So I'm going to combine this, if you don't mind, with item 12 because this is our general status update regarding the AB 918 negotiations. Here's my checklist of items. So at this point, here's where we are with respect to AB 918's map.
We can share screen, you can share it.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Oh, I'm not sharing screen, anything.
Oh, okay.
I'm just talking, I'm looking to, I'm looking at my notes. So all the parties, ECRMC, El Centro, Pioneers, and Heffernan have at this point received from our office due diligence request lists and have confirmed receipt. ECRMC and UCSD have told us they are close to a draft term sheet for hospital management that we're waiting to see. We have determined the best structure for the transaction, the potential transaction between ECRMC and El Centro. This is more mechanical than commercial, so this is more, what is the paperwork we need to potentially transfer hospital to IVHD? That's contained in, partially in a term sheet that we've delivered to ECRMC and El Centro today. So we delivered, you know, we've been kind of, we have our NDA. We've been having plenty of discussions, ideas. We were seeking an LOI, and there was some delay on receiving an LOI, and so we decided to send one ourselves with terms that we feel follow AB 918 pretty big picture. It doesn't bind this board to anything, it's just to get the ball rolling. So it was received, and hopefully, you know, we can spend some time in the next, between now and the next board meeting, having some meetings with ECRMC and El Centro to discuss potential transfer of the hospital. And we have a data room ready to go, and all parties have access to it. So the data room is a virtual cloud that everyone can start sending the diligence items to. So diligence items, stuff like your books, your assets, your liabilities, retirement accounts, how much do you owe people? All of those things that will eventually be transferred over to IVHD and then become IVHD's responsibility. We're trying to get a hold of what is all that stuff that we're going to need to transfer over. So folks have access to the data room and are going to upload materials to that. There are some, the only gating issues we have, gating issues is like, there's a gate, and we can't make meaningful movement without someone else doing something. So it's like the ball is in their court. It's really just the due diligence items from each of the members, approval from the City of El Centro and ECRMC of our proposed LOI, and, you know, discussion regarding potential terms with El Centro, ECRMC, probably UCSD, and Preston Hollow also because of the bond issue and because UCSD is the manager of the hospital. So again, we haven't heard anything, and Director Merker isn't here, from Pioneers with respect to the NDA. So we still, they are the only party we don't have an NDA with.
Have they even acknowledged that? Has the attorney acknowledged that at all?
She has acknowledged receipt of the NDA and has told me prior to the last Pioneers meeting that they were going to have it on their agenda. But from what I understand, it was tabled and not approved. And no one has responded to that. The other update with respect to AB 918 that I think is ripe for discussion at this point, we can table it, but you can also have this discussion today, is, so I had a conversation, we have been collaborating with LAFCO throughout the electoral voting process. LAFCO is very, was very responsive and provided us the information that allowed us to draw the maps, for example. And I had a Zoom with the Executive Director of LAFCO earlier today where I, we discussed my memo on the maps and the proposed maps and the proposed resolution to make sure we're on the same page with respect to this works, right? Yes, this works, this is fine, once the board makes its decision. We've collaborated with LAFCO, which is what's required by AB 918. And once the board adopts the resolution at the June board meeting, we'll send it over to the elections official and iron out all those details so that we can set something up for plenty of time, right, for 2026 elections. And LAFCO has no objection that we've discussed to that, to that electoral voting district process. We also discussed the required dissolution of Heffernan and Pioneers with the LAFCO CEO, and agreed that it may be worth a discussion for this board to, first of all, take the two dissolutions separately in light of the Pioneers lawsuit. If we try to take them together, Pioneers is likely going to object to whatever resolution we pass dissolving them, and then Heffernan will just get mixed up in that. So my recommendation is to separate the two. You know, we can do both at the same time, but one will be caught up in litigation and the other will not be. But it may be worth a discussion to direct us to bring back a draft resolution, which you can adopt at the next board meeting, or you can just look at it, decide you want to make some changes, and then we can bring back to the next board meeting. But we should start talking about a dissolution date for Heffernan. It should, you know, the AB 918 requires that it be a date between July 1 and December 31 of this year. And once we pass that resolution, we are going to send it to LAFCO, and that will kickstart LAFCO's ability to figure out what they need to do with respect to property transfers, the dissolution, a resolution dissolving the healthcare district. Anything else that LAFCO needs to do on its end will be kickstart by our resolution.
How long is the process going to take once it gets to LAFCO?
So I asked that question, and the Executive Director of LAFCO is going to send me, you know, there's like a helpful kind of sort of cheat sheet, I'll just call it that, she didn't call it that, but on like timelines. Because from what we both kind of understood from the Cortez, Knox, Hertzberger Act, it likely will require LAFCO to maybe have a month to get a staff report ready, present the staff report to, with recommendations to the LAFCO Commission. I think they need two hearings. I think it comes to the board for a hearing, and I think there's some waiting period between the two. Maybe it's 30 days, maybe it's 45. And then there's a second hearing where they adopt the resolution, which effectively dissolves the agency and then makes various directions. And there's other stuff they have to do that's complicated, like discussions with potentially affected agencies, etc. So it may not be quick, which is why it would be helpful for us to start our end of the process sooner rather than later. Because if we pick a dissolution date of, say, you know, in June, on our June 13 meeting, if we pick a dissolution date of August 1, LAFCO may say, thank you, we disagree. It should be September 1, or it should be December 1. You know, they don't have to pick the same date that we pick, but we are required to recommend a dissolution date, and then our box will be checked. Then it gets into LAFCO's, uh...
So would it be-
House or whatever seat.
Yeah.
The ball is in LAFCO's court after that.
So even then, like, so say we gave like a December 31 dissolution date for Pioneers, right?
Right.
They could make it earlier.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, they could make it earlier. They could, they could accept our recommendation or not.
Yeah.
The only obligation on LAFCO under AB 918 is to dissolve the two healthcare districts prior to December, prior to January 1 of 2025. So there's a specific provision in AB 918 that says they can go rogue and not accept our dissolution date. But it's our obligation to recommend one.
The LAFCO can go rogue?
Well, they can just choose a different dissolution date.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we can say, we want August 1. And then they can say, well, we've done all this stuff, and here's all the reasons why August 1 doesn't make sense. We're going to do October 1.
Yeah.
And then that's what it is. LAFCO has the final say.
Okay.
We're just making a recommendation. Yeah, we have to recommend, say the exact, a date, the initial Board of Directors shall recommend to Aguirre County LAFCO a date for the dissolution of Pioneers and Heffernan. The dissolution date shall be between July 1 of 2024 and January 1 of 2025. And, and we can recommend a different dissolution date for Heffernan and Pioneers. It doesn't have to be the same one. And then LAFCO can accept that or not.
I'm just going to guess that the dissolution on Heffernan might be a little bit easier than the dissolution on Pioneers.
Right, and at least six baby steps so that we can start meeting our obligations under, or continue to meet our obligations under AB 918. My, my guess is, I recommend doing both. I recommend doing Pioneers and Heffernan.
Yeah.
But we have to come in with the expectation that the Pioneers' resolution will probably be objected to by Pioneers or probably say that, you know, we can't act on, or LAFCO can't act on it until the lawsuit is resolved. I don't know. We'll see. So, but I do think it's probably worthwhile to start having that discussion and to start drafting those resolutions so that we can at least check our box and meet this board's obligation to recommend a dissolution date so that LAFCO can start doing their part of the game, too. If anyone feels it's too soon, just voice your opinion, or if anyone wants to direct legal counsel to bring back a draft resolution for evaluation, for consideration, I can also do that.
I'd like to make a motion to direct counsel to bring a resolution to the board.
I had a quick question.
And it would be for the dissolution of both, correct?
Right. I'll second the motion on both.
Oh, second motion.
I just had a question.
No, you can go.
Well, just, is there anything, any key indicators that we're looking for that would let us know when a good time would be for Heffernan? When would be a good time for Heffernan to hand over the keys, basically? Like, they may say, like, well, not right now, we're right in the middle of some things, what have you. We don't want to, you know, just like we thought about board members here, like changing seats, what have you. Is there, is there a best time for this to occur for Heffernan? For the best transition of services, basically?
Like whenever, are they on a fiscal budget?
Yeah, the fiscal year calendar.
So, Sylvia Romell?
Okay, sorry.
We are in the middle of finishing the project of the Mergent Care Center. It's going to be the biggest one in Imperial Valley. And the date to finish that vision is-
Probably going to be no later than August 1.
No later than August. No later than August. And we still have some things that we need, that we need to finish before you decide to dissolve this. I mean, we're fully a hundred percent with you, you know, we're willing to do whatever we have to do so that you can take over, but we need time. And this is very important to us because as, as a board member that has been there for over twenty years and everybody else, this is our last, our last phenomenon, this is our last, this is the last thing we're going to do. And we want to do it loud and clear, letting them know that this is, this is what we've done through the Heffernan board and now we have new leaders that are going to continue to do even better.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, I think our board will be respectful of that. I know that you guys, you know, opening that and your board members who have worked really hard to get that open, I think that's something that must definitely take into consideration.
That'll be the last thing we're giving to the city.
That'll be the best thing I've done.
Thank you so much for taking consideration.
And the other thing, you know, because what I will plan to do is have discussions with LaFCO, have discussions, I'll have a discussion with Heffernan and have a discussion with Pioneers, if they'll talk to me, about a date that would work best so that when I come back with the resolution, I can tell you, here's what I know, here's what, you know, because it's going to be probably a blank line with respect to the date, because you're not directing me on a date, but I can come back with recommendations and say, October 1 seems to make a lot of sense because, et cetera, here are the conversations that I've had. LaFCO may have input too, so between now and June, I will confer with Ms. Graff from LaFCO and ask her if there's a date because, you know, there's a lot of complicated stuff that would have to happen in between and, for example, with the property tax transfers, we don't want to pick a date that's just untenable, you know? So I'll have those discussions and have that ready for your information. And then if you, at the next board meeting, say, this looks good, here's the date I want to pick, we can adopt the resolution next board meeting. If you say, I don't have enough here, I need more information before I adopt this resolution, bring it back next month with this or with that, answer these questions, we'll, we'll work out whatever case the board wants, I just wanted to make sure we started the discussion.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought exactly, is that the resolution would come through essentially blank and we would give them the opportunity to, you know, give us a, you know, to take that into consideration, to be able to, to give them the closure that they need on their end to tie up any loose ends that they may have, so that it's a smoother transition for, for everyone.
Yeah, I think the goal of our board is a smoother transition, the better. As, you know, as much as possible. So in respect to the Kaufman Hall study, so what we're waiting on right now is just Pioneers to sign the NDA, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
So going back to the Kaufman Hall study, so what we're still waiting on, what's holding up that is Pioneers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so the Kaufman Hall study is really what kind of would drive the property tax, you know, or the potential additional funding mechanism for the board?
So there's two parts to this that I see. One is the current property tax revenue that is directed to the two healthcare districts currently, LaFCO would redirect that to IVHD. The second part is whether or not there's going to be a vote, an additional property tax put on the ballot for November, which is the Kaufman Hall part of it. And if so, what should it be, how much, why, what would it fund? That's the Kaufman Hall part of it. So, yeah, I think it's, you know, yeah, it's just difficult to put, that's, that's a separate issue in terms of property taxes because if there were no ballot, I'm trying to think, in November, then this board would be functioning off of Heffernan's property taxes and operating the urgent care or whatever, you know, Heffernan was going to do. And if by, for example, the November election, you know, we're still in discussions with ECRMC and El Centro about the potential acquisition of ECRMC, that's the, we're just, it's the, that's the ball that's moving along.
I know the, the one, the one thing that we're looking at for revenue there is the property tax, but how do we run scenarios potentially of maybe, you know, sales taxes? So anybody coming through our county, our city who can, who may be utilizing their services, it might be a fairer way, so to speak, to get funding for the community as a whole, because that's coming from the community as a whole, as a sales tax versus just, we're almost always penalizing the homeowners on their taxes.
Yeah.
You know, it's always on their shoulders, so to speak.
So the way to impose a sales tax, there's a couple of different ways, but usually it's by initiative, from my understanding, and that would require an election too. That's a different mechanism, and I don't know if that's a mechanism that would be addressed in the Kaufman Hall study, for example. The, the purpose of the Kaufman Hall study, yeah, is to recommend a funding mechanism.
So I think is, if it's safe to say, so like the funding mechanism, I see it as like an additional funding mechanism because the hospitals both do bring in revenues.
Right.
And this is the gap where the hospitals don't make enough revenue, so then they go to taxpayers.
Right.
Essentially, how I see this playing out, since Pioneers is refusing to participate in the Kaufman Hall, what they're kind of setting up our board to do is, you know, for the milestone for AB 918 is make that funding source stay in place where only Heffernan and those PMH tax base payers are the ones paying it because they're not participating in the study to give us the data that we need to make it where we can even do a ballot initiative to have it fairly and have everybody pay, correct?
Yeah.
I agree.
And we do have a motion on the floor.
We do have a motion on the floor. Discussion, no discussion, that is, some wise.
I do have, I do have one more thing, I guess I wanted to add, and it's not really, I'm fine calling for the question so we can vote because it might be more of an additional agenda item, but if we're going to go ahead and pass this motion for the resolution, I think we need to give some serious consideration as to who's going to be running the ship as far as we need to have a CEO for the Imperial Valley Healthcare District. So I, I mean, yeah, I guess I just want to toss that out there, but like I said, that could be more of a future agenda item, it really isn't relevant to.
Yeah.
The motion on the floor to have the resolution for this dissolution. So I guess I would call for the question.
Okay, so with that, I had a motion by, by Valdez and I had a second by Metta. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, motion carries. And then, yeah, I think, you know, items for future agenda, I think once we start getting these, you know, it's assumed that the staff, you know, even though we dissolved Heffernan, you're not getting rid of any of the staff at the same time, but I do think that IVHD will need to hire a CEO and, or, you know, have somebody step up, but I think that's kind of like farther out, you know, negotiations and stuff like that, so it's with El Centro.
I will say, just to interject, the, because the process of hiring a potential, like, lead employee, which is a good idea for this board, may take some time. You may want to start, I mean, this is what I've seen from other boards, is, there's a number of options, but you could, some folks conduct recruitment, right? They hire a recruiter and then they conduct a statewide search for the best talent, et cetera. You could also post on your website solicitation for applications, that's the most like opposite end of the spectrum, right? Like, you're just posting a solicitation for interested applicants and collecting resumes, gathering names, because when you're at the point where you want to select a potential, it doesn't even have to be a CEO, it could just be your first administrative employee, which you will need after, especially after Heffernan is dissolved. You know, it, it would be helpful to start thinking about that in advance so that you can, because once you want your employee, it's going to take two months to get that employee, right? So.
Is there a way we could use, you know, Heffernan's employees as like interim, so say if I'm going to do an interim administrator or?
You are essentially doing that already because AB 2449, or I'm sorry, AB 918 allows you to do that with respect to administrative employees, so you can continue doing that up until, you know, assuming you're going to pick a date for dissolution that's far enough in the future, right? You're probably going to be fall or wintertime, then you can cross that bridge when you get to it. But yes, you can continue to rely on the Heffernan employees, absolutely. So.
With that, do you have a motion to move to closed session?
I have, I make a motion to move to closed session.
I have a motion by, you see it, a second by Valdez, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to stay in here or do you want to?
I'll, like, I'll be here until the meeting.
What are you doing?
You did what? Just kind of leave. And with that, we'll reconvene to open session. Do we have any actions that we would like to add to the next future agenda? And if we have none today, I would suggest emailing, if you don't have any today and you have fun before the next board meeting.
I think we do have one, if we can have another financial report.
Yeah. Any others? Right, and with that, I will adjourn this meeting at eight.
Correct, there's no reportable option from closed session.
At eight sixteen, PMO adjourns meeting.